We have a public hearing. Stacy Muncie rezoning request. The Lee County Board of Supervisors and Lee County Planning Commission will hold a joint public hearing on Tuesday, October the 18th, 2016, at 6:00 P.M. in the General District Courtroom of the Lee County Courthouse in Jonesville, Virginia. The purpose of the hearing is to solicit input on a rezoning request from Stacy, this is Stacy I hear, Muncie, to rezone property that is currently zoned A1 Agricultural District to B1 Limited Business District. The property is located in the Ewing Community and consists of two acres of land, parcel Property is located on the south side of Wellness Road approximately 610 miles west of Chapel Station Road Route 684. Floor is open for any input.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make just a comment here to begin with, just to familiarize you with this a little bit. And I will say, there's been some questions raised, and I will say, at face value, typically you would view this potentially as spot zoning. However, in this instance, property in question, there was a business that had existed at that location for probably close to 50 years prior to zoning being adopted here in the county. And typically what you saw in cases like that, when zoning was adopted, they basically threw a box around whatever was there, and it was zoned appropriately for that. In this instance, this property, even though a business existed, but still, the entirety of it was still zoned as A1 Agricultural, which made that business, the date that zoning became effective in 1993, it made that business what's considered a non-conforming use. And therefore, should that business cease to operate at any time in the future for a year, it's no longer allowed, well, it may not even have to be a year. I'd have to look at that particular section, I don't know if Kathy remembers or not, but some non-conforming uses are allowed to continue, like replacing manufactured homes, you have a year, we actually have two years in case they're burned. But in the case of a business, it may have been that the day it would go out of business, it would become non-conforming and no longer allowed, which prevents any business in the future, and which also affects the property value of that business, since it's a business property to begin with. So, it's being looked at in the vein of that this was an era originally from the zoning ordinance that was adopted in 1993 in the zoning map. And to correct that situation, to go back and zone this particular parcel as B1 business. There might be more information than you want, but I just want to give you some background on it.
And this change in zoning is what we voted on in the last meeting, is that correct?
No, we voted, the last meeting, there was some changes in definition, and the allowance for administrative and professional offices in the A1 zone was eliminated, which no longer allows those in the A1 zone.
Well, and I can speak a little bit to that too, which Dane pretty much covered everything I was going to say, but I think Kathy can attest. When I went to her months ago now to check on this, I was shocked that it wasn't zoned for business to begin with, because as Dane said, my grandfather operated a store on the property for, you know, nearly 50 years, and after he did, there was another store on the property up until about three years ago now. So I was, you know, I was taken aback that it wasn't zoned business to begin with. The house is where I'm actually wanting to be, which, you know, the store itself is where the business was located, but both parcels are on one tract, and that is what I would be asking, the reason.
Is this for your office?
It is. It is for law office. At the current time, it would just be part-time. I would just want to be there a couple of days a week initially, but that is the purpose of the request.
I think there must be some misunderstanding when we was talking about the zoning, because from what was said, the zoning along the highway, you was wanting to roll it over to actually make it easier for businesses. So I don't understand why we're having such an issue with, if it's supposed to make it easier for businesses, we're having a hard time, we're having to amend something to even have an existing business go back into a business.
That is the, that's the long-term goal, and I'm not trying to speak for the Planning Commission, but that is the long-term goal. And again, as we discussed last month, it was something that was initiated, or that process of looking at zoning countywide, and looking especially at the primary road corridors to try and open them up or make them a little more development-friendly. I won't necessarily say business, but just development in general. That was initiated about 10 years ago, but it has, it has faltered. Of course, there's been turnover in the Planning Commission, there's been turnover in the Community Development Position, there's been turnover at the Planning District Commission level, who was providing assistance with this. So, we basically, we're eight years behind in what we should have gotten accomplished quite some time ago in looking at zoning overall through the county and trying to work out some development areas. Had that been done at that time, this would have probably been corrected during that time, because that's, we have, in certain instances, found situations where property was not properly zoned originally, it was an oversight, and it, you know, it was clear to see that the use at that time was not what it was zoned as, and we've made some similar corrections. Not a lot, but we have made a few of those corrections along, through the years.
So with the change we made, basically, we will run into a few of these issues like this until the rezoning actually comes through and actually says, we're going this much footage, and it just have to kind of be case by case?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I had a clear understanding of exactly where we're going.
Yeah, basically, Dane, just playing off what Dane was talking about. Should this property be rezoned? Absolutely. It should have never been A1 to begin with. That's, that's kind of where we was at at the last meeting, but what we were talking about at the last meeting was putting that as a permissible use in A1, which makes A1 keep getting more bloated all the time. Our board, you know, I think would all agree, and we've got to go vote here in a few minutes, but, you know, the property should be a business district, you know, I mean, a zone. And, you know, Ms. Muncie should have every right to use it that way, it's just doing it legally. That's, that's where, that's why we're here tonight, that's where we're at.
That's why, man, we will have a few of these issues come up until the rezoning actually in the next few years.
Well, and again, exactly what Dane said, Kathy actually found the map where we started the overlay process back, I've been on board about eight or nine years, so Dane's pretty right, what he said, about 10 years. If that would have been followed through when, you know, the previous director was let go and the one we just had came on board, if that would have been followed through, this wouldn't even be an issue. She could have, she could have done this months ago and wouldn't have to go through the hoops that we're going through the last two months.
And I know, they indicated last month, the district you're looking at right now is basically District Four, that's the one you've been keying on. And, Mr. Smith, no disrespect here, but I'm going to ask, I don't think there's probably a lot of issues in District Four that need to be looked at.
Not much, yes.
And I want them hopefully to move away from there and get to District One as soon as possible, because when you look at the entire county and you look at the other districts, most of them have areas where there is either a village commercial zone, which is a mixed use of business and residential, or they're, they have more business areas. If you look at District One, especially along the 58th corridor, you see agriculture, 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 that's about the only use that you've got there, very, very limited for development, and we're having more and more issues like this in that district, and I'm afraid we're going to continue to have more of those with the development that's taking place there now. So I think we're going to shift the focus over to that district, to work on that district first. And we might bring it in five, you know, each district separately, to clear one and get it approved instead of waiting to.
And I think that would be a good move.
Yeah.
And Kathy has already found the map where we started the overlay process back years ago, so, exactly what Dane said, that's, that's the plan, is to start right back where we, you know, left off with that overlay, to try to get that implemented as quickly as possible.
That's one of the questions I was going to ask, if it could be shifted from District Four down to District One.
It will be.
And what kind of timeline, I mean? What are you looking at a timeline to track?
Well, it's hard to say, I mean, you know, within a couple of meetings, I would think that we could pretty well hammer out. I mean, overlay, once you identify, there's going to be certain areas that we won't be able to overlay into. I work at Wellness Road State Park, you're not going to be able to overlay into that area, but, so, you know, that's the question issue. But picking a good number, and what I mean by that is, we had talked about, I think one time 500 feet was thrown out, then I think up to 800 feet off of the four lane, and make that stretch so many feet off of the four lane be the overlay. So once, once all that's decided, then the other thing, it just, we had talked about back when, when we had first started the overlay process, I think anytime you're dealing with zoning, I think it's always good to maybe have, like, for my district, District One, to change focus, is to have a hearing or a public forum where the public can come in and look and see what we're doing, so they can have questions. I don't think it's ever good to pass some type of overlay system like that without getting the people involved, letting them have a say, and kind of understand what, you know, they, I'm sure they're going to have questions, you know, how is this going to affect my properties, is it going to affect my taxes, things like that. So, you know, it's not an easy question to answer, but my goal would be District One to be in place, hopefully by the first of the year.
That's pretty ambitious. I was going to say four to six months.
Well, and I'm looking at, unless you do joint hearings, and I think in an instance like this, of course, if you do a public forum, that helps, but then to really follow...
Yeah, you've got to have the hearing.
To do the public comment, and you're looking at two months just to do the public hearings, with one month for the Planning Commission, one month for this board, so I think you're probably looking at about four months, maybe by spring, having it in place for District One.
Yeah, I mean, you know, yeah, I probably should have rephrased that a little bit, but by the first of the year, I hope to have, as the board, we hope to have basically everything ready to where, like Dane said, then you start looking at the public hearings to finalize it.
Okay, any more questions from our board to their board? None. Okay, you guys can go back to meet, and come back. Okay, next thing is our department ahead. First is Key, Aaron, Billy Inspector. How are you?
Good evening, everybody. Okay. The third quarter of 2016, that's July, August, and September, the Building Department issued nine new dwellings, two additions, four remodels, 42 heat pumps and electric services, 13 manufactured homes, 12 garages, ramps, and porches, nine others, and two new businesses. That was Black Diamond here in Jonesville, and Danny Wilder's convenience store down in Rose Hill. We didn't have any duplexes. It was a total of 93 permits issued. Permits by district was 25 in Rose Hill, seven in White Shoals, 26 in Jonesville, 24 in Rocky Station, and 11 in Yokum. Total permit fees were $8,465.92. Contractor's tax was $1,00972.51. There were 313 inspection site visits for that quarter, or, yeah, for that quarter, and there was one violation for this quarter.
You say the third quarter, that's July, August, September?
Yes, sir.
Sounds like you've been busy.
Yes, sir. It's been a busy, busy summer.
I'll have to get the count back, yes.
I hope so.
I have none.
Well, thank you, Key.
You're welcome. Have a great evening.
Is Alan here?
No, sir, he's on medical.
Do you have anything?
His report is in his bag.
Okay. Okay, Danny?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You should find our report in front of you, I laid those out earlier. I'll give you some highlights from the Extension Office for June, or, I'm sorry, for July, August, and September. Of course, the biggest part of July was actually, we moved into our new space July 1st, or June 30th, and then we opened for business July 1st, and we've just been busy trying to straighten everything out and get situated there, but I'll start with the agriculture report, with Amy Phannan, the Extension Agent for that. She went to Fredericksburg for the Young Farmer Summer Expo at the end of July. She returned from Ireland, her trip in Ireland, she returned July 1st. So, she went to Fredericksburg, or the days of the 29th through the 30th, and she competed in the discussion meeting, making the top eight in the state contest. And the event also had tours, educational workshops for young farmers. She also assisted with the National 4H Forestry Invitational in West Virginia, July the 31st through August the 3rd, and there was, there's usually over 100 participants that participate in that event. On September the 14th, the 4H Livestock Club started back with their weekly meetings, and foreagers in this club participate in several contests throughout the state and learn about meats, breeds, feeds, equipment, selection, and basic information of livestock. There are two meeting sites for foreagers, with one being at Elydale Elementary and the other at the Lee County Adult Learning Center. The meeting at Elydale is a new location. She had, previously, the Stockmans met here in Jonesville at her old office, but now she's meeting at Adult and at Elydale. And I, she didn't put the number of students that participated, but I know there was several, 10-plus I know that came to the first, came to the first meeting at Elydale. So, on September the 16th and 17th, in conjunction with Claiborne County Extension and their Soil and Water, and the Danielman Soil and Water District, and NRCS, she hosted a grazing school in, at the Teaching Center at the Vet Campus in Ewing. And that's, to my knowledge, that's the first one in our area that's, that's ever been. Most of the time, they have them on further up the state, so she, she was real good in getting us to host that. She also worked with kids in the creek on the 13th and 15th with all the sixth graders in Lee County. And then in September, the 4H cattle working teams have started practicing again, and there are six teams in Lee County. Moving on to the 4H report, of course, Lee County in Abingdon, the week of July the 25th through the 29th, and with a total of 60 folks from Lee County participating. In September, Sheila assisted with the rabbit poultry and the pig and sheep show at the Lee County Fair, and then she started school enrollments as soon as schools started back, the fourth through the seventh grades, at Eltona Flat, Lexington Middle, and Jonesville Middle, and Elydale Schools were completed, they completed their 4H enrollment in September, and also she got the two high schools enrolled in September. Also, she set up a booth at the Festival in the Park on Saturday for kids' activities during that festival. Program Assistant Mindy Rutherford's report, she was hired in April, and then she began, she completed her training, and then she began setting up classes, and she will be covering Lee and Scott County. And just as a matter of information for you all, because I know some of you are new members, the family nutrition program is, it is provided through Virginia Tech, but it is a federal grant that pays for all those positions, and the county doesn't, you know, have to pay anything for those two positions that we have in our office. We have Mindy who does adult SNAP education, and also we have Leslie Harless, whose report didn't get included, she was out sick today, so she didn't include her report, but she does the, the education in the school system for the youth in nutrition education, and both of those ladies do a very good job. Finally, my report is in the front of your packet, and just the highlights of, I did a presentation for the Love Lady DAR on the Appalachian Culture and Heritage Programs that offer through my program in Extension. And we also, the Extension Office provided 115 what I call goodie bags for the RAM event. And what we do is, through the year, we save up, if we print a publication, or, you know, get information that we don't hand out to somebody, we'll put it back in a stack, and we save up all of our leftovers and our goodies and things, and then we put them in bags and distribute those during the RAM event to people who probably, more than likely, don't participate in other Extension programs. So that's to give them information and also to encourage them to use Cooperative Extension. I want to talk about, the next thing is, of course, we had our open house on September the 30th, and by all accounts, I think it was very successful. We had between 40 and 50 people that dropped in during the three hours that we had advertised, and folks were really pleased to see, to see that new office and to, to see the commitment that the county had made to Extension. And we have, we have been really busy actually, you know, in the office during those three months since we moved in, we've had, we've had several classes, and we've had a lot of drop-in folks, and, and then, you know, our regular users have found out where we are, and so they, you know, they're coming by and calling and stuff. So we're really very thankful and really pleased to be in that space. The last thing, I'll refer you to the handout that I put in with your packet, it has the blue map of Virginia with different shades of blue, and of course, the legend will tell you. This, this was written by a specialist at Virginia Tech who helped me, or I helped her, or whatever, with this balanced living with diabetes program. We did that program in Pennington on Tuesdays in June. We had four programs, two hours each, and we partnered with Food City, who provided us a registered dietitian. And I don't know if any of you know how scarce registered dietitians are in our area, they're just, they just, we just can't find them at all. Of course, with no hospital, you know, that's, that's one thing, because a lot of hospitals will have a registered dietitian, either on staff or on contract, if they can, they can help with their diet planings and stuff. So, she, she provided the educational part of it, and then, of course, I did some of the cooking and the sampling for how to cook, you know, for someone who has diabetes, and how to manage, you know, diet, and that kind of thing. So, it was part of a research study that Virginia Tech is ongoing, and so she gave you the information about the statistics for Lee County. One thing that stuck out for me was, she said the annual death rate of Lee County residents due to diabetes is much higher than the state average at 31.9%. Overweight and obesity, which is a driver of the increase in diabetes rate, is at 63% in Lee County. That means over half of our citizens are overweight or obese, and that's why that contributes to diabetes, along with a lot of other things in our area, you know, genetics and our culture, you know, all, all contribute to that. But the wonderful thing about this program was that in September, we had a follow-up program at our office, and I was kind of disappointed, because we had 10 people who participated in, in the program those four weeks, but when it came to September and we had our little reunion, only six of the, of the participants were able to come. Two were out with broken hips, and one was sick, and the other one had a family emergency. But that information that she has given you there is for those six people who actually came back to the reunion. And as you'll see, she said there was, the first class was conducted, six residents took advantage of the program and showed improved dietary patterns and increased physical activity. Importantly, four of the six showed improved blood sugar control, with all four showing greater than 1% reduction in hemoglobin A1C, which is a measure of the three-month blood sugar average. The average percentage of A1C reduction was 5.82%, which is very, very good. A 1% reduction of A1C has clinical significance. In addition, four participants had, had a decrease in weight, the average weight loss of five pounds. So that's, this is good. This, this was very good result, I mean, small numbers, but as I told her, we talked extensively after, you know, the program is over, this program could be done in Lee County all the time. I mean, just, you know, an Extension Agent could be doing this program and nothing else all the time, because there is such a need in air. The Lee Whisco Health District is one of the top five districts in the state for diabetes and obesity. So, there's really a need for this, and I just wanted to share that with you all. This, this was all done with grant funding and in cooperation with Food City, and so I just wanted to make you aware of how that went, and what an important program that was for the, for the county. So, I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Danny.
You're very welcome. Thank you all.
Okay, you guys are back. What was your finding?
Mr. Chairman, like we said when we first came in here, our, our boards have, you know, we was all in agreeance that, you know, I think that the property should have been business zoned to begin with. Our biggest concern was spot zoning, but based on the recommendation that County Administrator had, and citing the fact that this was probably adopted in an error, and there's probably more errors that we're going to come across as we sift through this, but, you know, based on that recommendation and the fact that the overlay, if all goes well, overlay will, you know, encompass this area to begin with, our board unanimously approved and recommended to you all for approval.
Okay, thank you. Do we want to vote on it?
I'll make that motion to rezon that from A1.
I'm second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Okay, Constitutional Office, I think we have a Treasurers Report here. Okay, Constitutional Office, I think we have a Treasurers Report here. Next is, uh, Public Expression. Do we have anybody here from the public who want to, uh, do any talking? All right. Approval in minutes. Motion to approve. Here a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The Administrator has reported that the payroll warrants have been issued. Okay, delegation, Brian Hogan.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hogan called, uh, this afternoon and requested to be taken from the agenda, stated that he did not have any need to address the board's staff.
Who is this guy?
He's, uh, his business, Home Holler Sales, I think is the name of it. Uh, he's a gentleman that was here last month and spoke during public expression.
Okay. Okay, and in building inspection, equal practices?
That's, that's what he was going to-
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, uh, and then approval of, uh, disbursements. Uh, here, motion to, uh, to approve? So move. Here a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, under old business, Appalachian Community Action Tipping Fee waiver, do we want to, uh, hold this until closed session? I move that, make a motion that we do.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, new business. Board Department, Lonesome Pine Office on Youth. Does anybody have any, uh? Did you contact the schools on that?
I have not. I've attempted to contact Lee High two or three times about a couple of issues, and I've not been able to get through to them, but I can follow up if you want. I don't know, um-
I see, you know, some kids that would actually want to attend.
We can check with them and see, I mean, they'll probably just put it out ad, for advertisement to, to the student body. Uh, I mean, it needs, probably needs to be a junior or senior, because it needs to be somebody that can drive-
Yeah.
-to get to the meetings. But I, I'll contact them if that's what you want me to do, but between now and next month, and in the meantime, you know, I'd encourage you all, if you know someone or a student that you think might be interested, then we'll contact them directly.
Okay, I make motion that we table list until next time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is Hospital Authority Letter of Intent Issue.
Sure enough, I just want to put a placeholder in there this month, the, you're all aware that the Hospital Authority has signed a letter of intent to work with AmeriCorps Health, LLC, uh, in efforts to reopen the hospital. There are, there's some action required by the Board of Supervisors, I have those documents with me tonight, but, uh, since that does deal with investing in public funds, this board has a, a financial interest in the property, I would ask that be taken up in closed session.
Okay. Ely, uh, Del Waterline Replacement Resolution?
We, the county's been awarded an ARC grant in the amount of $140,000 for the Elydale Waterline Replacement Project, and it's administered by the Department of Housing and Community Development, and several documents are required to be adopted in order to comply with the grant conditions. Uh, they're all standard documents that are typically required for any ARC or, uh, Community Development block grant. Uh, the compliance resolution, we tried to simplify this, there's about five different actions there, but the compliance resolution outlines the, each of the documents, and copies of each of those individual, uh, documents are attached as well, but one motion to adopt the compliance resolution would approve all of them by reference. The first one in there is the Fair Housing Compliance Certification, uh, just states that you will comply with all fair housing laws, uh, residential anti-displacement relocation assistance says that if you should have to, uh, displace someone from their home, which I've never seen a water project that did, but we still have to adopt that, saying we will provide assistance to them and, and help them to find, uh, suitable housing. Uh, also, the Local Business Employment Plan, there's advertisements that go out, uh, for these in, in trying to identify, uh, contractors and individuals who would be available to work on the project, uh, looking to see if that included the, uh, women and minority on, but we do one on that too, but then there's the Section 504 Grievance Procedure, if anyone feels that they have a complaint for grievance filed, uh, based on this, uh, grant award, and then the, finally, is a resolution to appropriate funds. This is not a resolution actually appropriating those, but it is a resolution of intent to appropriate them once they are received. But one, one motion to adopt, uh, Resolution 16 dash O-32 will adopt all of those.
Which one is that, the very first one here? Resolution for-
Uh, Resolution for Compliance, the Elydale Waterline Replacement Grant.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution 16 dash O-32, uh, Resolution for, uh, Line Replacement Project.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then that's, uh, that's, next is, uh, Tourist and Director Restonation.
You have a copy of her letter of resignation, her last day was Friday, October the 7th, so, we, uh, currently have a vacancy in that position.
Okay, I think that we should talk about this position during, uh, closed session. Okay, E, the last one here on the new business, radio communication system upgrade.
In May of this year, uh, I put Mr. Mayor, Mr. Smith, but I, I think Mr. Smith was involved in some of this, but at one of the meetings, the one that I remembered, uh, primarily, I don't think he was able to be there, but, uh, we provided information to them, but we met with representatives of the Sheriff's Department, 911, and our radio system vendor, which is Mollarola, uh, to discuss possible upgrade of the emergency communication system, and as a result of that meeting, they provided estimates on several upgrade scenarios, uh, some is, is simple as just replacing, uh, uh, Sheriff's Department mobile units, uh, the most complex one involved replacing all emergency communication radios in the county, including fire and rescue, and constructing some new towers, uh, so it, it varies. Uh, we do have a couple of other grants in play on this, uh, and I, I just, we've sort of let this sit for two or three months, and I think it's time that we open discussion on this matter as a full board, uh, but the initial discussions were meant to take place in closed session, because I do have project cost estimates from the vendor, but I, and I don't want to reveal those estimates in, in light of the fact that this could be going out to bid, and I don't want to have those prices out there, so, again, I, I've provided you those under separate cover for, uh, your personal review, but we'd like to discuss those further in closed session.
Okay, do you have anything else?
I do not, uh, not, nothing for open session, I, I, and I have down there investment of public funds, I also need to discuss a couple of items under personnel.
Do you want to take a break, or go on?
I don't know if the county attorney has anything or not, uh-
I have a couple of things, but it's things that I think we need to discuss in closed session.
You guys have anything you want to talk about now?
I have none.
Now? All right. Close session now, or take a break? Okay, and, uh, question for closed session, we want to go- Take a break now? Close session after. Going to closed session under 2 dot 2 dash 3711, A dot 11 Employment Personnel, and also under 2 dot 2 dash 3711, A dot 6 up Investing in Public Funds Contracts.
I'll second one.
All in favor?
Aye.